At this time, I'd like to welcome you to our regular meeting. We do have guests with us this evening. This is our first opportunity to welcome people to be here in person. We do have following all social distancing requirements. Of course, if you're a family member and you're sitting together, that's okay. But otherwise, we've got you spaced out. Welcome you this evening and welcome those that are joining us online. We have with us this evening Pastor Michael Mathis. He's the pastor at Mission Fields Ministries to lead a center invocation. Be followed by our pledge allegiance, if you will. All please rise.
Almighty God, once again, we've come together this evening, Lord, to discuss the many things that we're dealing with in our world, especially here in the town of Hope Mills. And we thank you for your presence here with us this evening. We're grateful for so many things, God, that you continue to do in our lives, God. And we are always reminded, even when we do the best that we can do in the places that you have us strategically placed, there are times, God, that we error, Lord, and we don't make the proper decisions. And in these things, God, simply put, we ask now that you would forgive us. Oh, Lord, once again cleanse us, oh God, from any obstacle spiritually that would hinder us, God, from seeing what you would have us to see and hearing what you would have us to see here in this business meeting tonight. We thank you for your forgiveness. We thank you not only for your forgiveness, but we thank you for our leadership, Mayor Jackie Warner, Lord, and the entire board. We thank you, God, and we thank you, God, for how you continue to shield and protect them as they go out and come in. Thank you for a reasonable amount of health and strength, Lord, that they might carry out the things, God, that you have purposed for their lives. Not only them, Lord, but we are so grateful, Father, for our first responders, those that are always so willing to put their lives in harm's way to protect your people, oh God, sometimes not even considering their own lives. And so we thank you, oh God. And as we give thanks to you, Father, we continue to be reminded of the times that we live in now. And God, you've continued to keep a shield around the town of Hope Mills, God, that the worst that the adversary would try to do, he had not been able to do it. And it's only because of your love and your mercy and your grace. And we are so thankful for that, oh Lord. And now, God, as we go into the business and the agenda, once again, we ask, God, not that you would only allow us to have man's wisdom, but God, continue to endow the board and everybody, God, with your wisdom, God, that proper decisions that we might not even understand would be in the best interests of this town in the future. And we give thanks to you now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. At this time, I have one item that is put before us to add to our agenda, and that is a consideration of approval of the currently budgeted engineering contract with Fleming &amp; Associates in allowing the town manager Adams to enter a contract in the amount of $24,970 to complete the design phase on the Big T's restroom, making it ADA compliant. And this would go under the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a problem with that amount of money going under the consent agenda. I would rather we discuss it and have it explained to us a little bit. I would make a motion that we put it somewhere else, under new business or whatever.
It would become item E under new business. Are there any other additions or deletions to our agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve our agenda with that change adding an item E to discuss the ADA compliant design of Big T's under consent agenda, under new business?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Have a motion or have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. The next item on our agenda, it gives me great pleasure to be able to present this. We have, I received an email, and I had it up on my computer. I think anything with technology in this room right now must be having a problem. This was sent to me so that we could recognize this gentleman. It's called the President's Volunteer Service Award. And you get this award for completing over 100 volunteer hours in about five months. I received this from Melody Dickerson. Of course, you know, they have moved, so she was trying to make sure this happened, and she did this by way of email. So tonight, we have with us, it's called the President's Volunteer Service Award, and it's presented to Jasper Gilbert. And it's the Gold Award by the Corporation of National and Community Service in recognition and appreciation for your commitment to strengthen our nation and communities through volunteer service. And this was awarded in 2020. And it's called the National and Community Service Points of Light. So I'm going to go down on the floor and present this to Mr. Jason Gilbert. Probably wasn't the first time I've had anybody presenting somebody with a mask on. It's one of those things we have to do. But we do appreciate your volunteer service and know that it gives me great pride in order to present those kinds of awards because that's what we need more than anything else right now in Hope Mills is people willing to volunteer to help. So thank you, thank you so much. This is another, I want to take this down to talk. This is another opportunity for us in Hope Mills to recognize a special group of people. And this is the proclamation that I'm about to read from. Whereas the service rendered the United States by the American mothers and families is the greatest source of the country's strength and inspiration. Whereas the American mother and family are doing so much for the moral and spiritual uplift of the people of the United States and hence so much for good government and humanity. American Gold Star Mothers and Families suffer the supreme sacrifice in the loss of their sons and daughters in wars and conflicts through the years. Whereas on June 23rd, 1936, a joint congressional resolution designated the last Sunday in September as Gold Star Mothers' Day. And in 2011, President Barack Obama amended the day to Gold Star Mothers' and Families' Day. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim Sunday, September 27th, 2020, Gold Star Mothers' and Families' Day in the Town of Hope Mills. In tribute, and I urge all citizens to join in expression of appreciation to the many Gold Star Mothers and Families in our community who have given so much on our behalf in times of both war and peace. Next, I have on presentations, I have Tobias Fullwood with USDA. He's going to present a letter of conditions for the public safety building loan. And I'll turn this over to Mr. Holland.
Tobias. Good evening, counsel. Let's get this set up real quick. We can hear you, Tobias.
Yeah, I can't see anything.
I know. This one's not on, Jane. There we go. Okay. I'm going to turn this around so that he can see y'all. All right. Again, Drew Holland, Finance Director, this is Tobias Fullwood from USDA. Going to go over the final things that we need for our USDA loan approval. So Tobias, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Drew. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name's Tobias Fullwood with USDA Rural Development. Here today to present the letter of conditions for the John W. Hodges Public Safety Center. We have gone through, we've completed our review of the environmental. We've completed the review of the financial feasibility as well as the underwriting. And we have state and federal approval to deliver the letter of conditions to you guys. The purpose of this meeting today is to obligate $17 million for the John W. Hodges Public Safety Center and to lock in the rate of 2.25%, one quarter percent, for 35 years. Similar to my previous presentation, I'll try to answer any questions you guys may have. You can stop me at any time, and I'll try to answer or address any questions that you guys may have. I think in your packages, you should have the letter of conditions. I'll skim it. Hit the key points associated with it. And certainly, again, if you have any questions, just let me know. Just stop me and let me know. As it states on the first page, it says, this letter is not to be considered as loan approval representation of availability of funds. General language, they would not authorize me to present in front of you if we didn't already have the prior approval. So everything we have today, I will go over. And I'll give it back over to you guys to make a vote, either to accept or deny the conditions, and we'll move forward from there. Again, we're looking to obligate $17 million and lock in the rate of 2.25% for 35 years. I'll jump to page two real quick, project budget. You'll see the project budget there on page two, which was prepared by-
Tobias. Tobias, they do not have the copy of that in front of them.
Oh.
Just kind of go over what's in it then.
Okay. Estimated project budget there. It's a breakdown of all the line items associated with construction. That comes out to the $17 million, $350,000. Again, we're going to obligate the $17 million. The $350,000 will come from the town. The interest, I'm sorry, the term of the loan will be 35 years. It'll be a fixed rate and a fixed term. So your payment on the first year will be the exact same payment you'll have on year 35, or if you want to pay the loan out, pay the loaner. Security requirements will be installment purchase and a first lien on the property. We'll also have a security agreement and a financing statement on all, on any, on finances, I'm sorry, on any equipment greater than $10,000. Any individual equipment greater than $2,000. Next thing on here is local government commission. We'll be working simultaneously, once we have your approval on this, we'll work simultaneously with LGC, as well as working with a local lender to get construction financing in place to move forward so we can start construction on your buildings. Next, the next bullet point is pre-authorized debit. Just to give you an example of how our program works, pre-authorized debit is authorization to draft your account. Let's say if we go to construction October 1 of 2020, just give us a, for instance, let's say we go to construction October 1, 2020. Say we complete construction October 1, 2021, and close the loan, let's say, November 1, 2021. Your first payment will be due one year from loan closing. So your first payment on the new facility will be due November 1, 2022, is when your first payment will be. It'll be the same, your payment will be doing the same again, same amount and same day every year for 35 years. The appraisal, basically, the appraisal needs to equal the amount of debt that you're obtaining associated with this building. The interim lender will provide an appraisal. So that's something we'll need to work together as far as myself and Drew and your interim lender, that you guys elect to choose. Mitigation measures associated with the project is preservation. We must, if we, any historic, let's say artifacts, things of that nature, we must stop construction and contact the Tapabah Indian Nation who's identified it's the maiden Indian tribe in that area. And they would need to remove the artifact. We would need to modify some things in place to make sure we're not disturbing any historic land. Reserve requirements are our typical 10% reserve for 10 years. And that's for your benefit, that's a separate account. You would place these funds into a separate account, a reserve account, that would just basically sit there for your use if you were to need funds. And then it will also be a capital asset reserve placement account of $10,000 annually. Those are funds that are set aside that if you guys need it for capital improvement or capital purchase, those are funds for you. You would send the letter, an email to me, Drew, or the mayor, send an email to me saying, hey, we need to cap this for this reason. And I would basically document at the amount. And then each year, we'll continue to bid on that account. And again, those are your funds. We just honor them on your annual audit on an annual basis. Funds in and funds out, the first kind of funds, first funds out would be the African contribution of $350,000. And then after that would be the interim loan of $17 million. And that's really everything else, generic information, generic language associated with the conditions. Does anyone have any questions of me?
Does anyone have questions, if so, at this time?
Madam Mayor, the only question I have is, is there a way we can get a copy of the condition sheet?
I can get that. It's in my office. But I can get that to you, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? So we need a motion now to accept. Is that what we're looking for now?
Yeah, we just, the loan resolution needs to be approved. It'll be in two parts. Is that right, Tobias? One for 9.5 and one for 7.5?
That's correct.
We just need to vote on those.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the acceptance of the $17?
Loan resolution.
Loan resolution. Let's just say we need a motion to approve the loan resolution from USDA.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed.
Okay, good deal. This has been a long time coming.
Yes, it has.
Finally get to this point. Just to give you a heads up on what's next, some of the things that Tobias mentioned. What we'll do is, I've already contacted with the architect. And by the end of this week, we'll be sending out the request for proposals and putting it on our website, different things, so that people can bid on this project. We'll probably leave that open for about a month. So about this time next month. Well, I think we talked about today possibly set on October 27th at 2:00 for the deadline for getting those proposals in. Then we'll open those proposals. We'll choose, you know, hopefully the lowest responsible bidder. Then we'll vet that contractor's company. And then, once one's selected, we'll bring that to you. I'm hoping the first meeting of November will approve the contractor. Once the contractor's approved, we will set a schedule of construction and finalize that amount because if we have to do any, say, engineering changes or different things based on the bid, what we need to switch up or change or adjust, we'll do it at that time. Once we get that finalized, we'll have the amount of the construction. When we have that, then we can do the bidding out for the, what he said, the construction loan process. So we'll bid that out. Usually, we use all the local banks in town and a couple of national banks. Once we get those bids in, hopefully before the end of November, then we'll bring that construction loan back to you for approval of that. Once that's approved by us, then I have to submit it to LGC, the Local Government Commission. They have to approve it. They only meet once a month, the first week of each month. So I'm hoping to make there December, that first week of December deadline. If we don't make that deadline, then of course, it goes to January. And a lot of times, that's more up to them than us. You can have the information, you can be on their schedule. And if they think they need to wait, or they might not have everything they want to make a decision, then they decide we're going to put it to the next one. So hopefully, that'll happen in December. Worst case scenario, possibly January. Once that's approved, we can start construction. So that's the game plan. That's what we're looking for now. Tobias, anything to add?
That's it.
Madam Mayor, I do have one question.
Yes.
Drew, the initial request was 16-5.
Yes.
Why did it increase to 17?
Was it 17? Good question. Why it changed to 17 is they allowed extra money in the loan to cover the interest cost of the construction loan.
Okay.
When we get the construction loan, the USDA loan's going to pay off that construction loan. But while we have that loan, they will charge us interest. And right now, that's not part of the budget. And we won't know what that amount's going to be until we actually get the loan. So instead of budgeting for something that we're not sure of or how much it's going to be, we'll wait, do a budget amendment at that time to the project, and we have a cushion of half a million dollars just in case, whatever that is. If they don't charge us that interest, then we don't borrow that money. We don't have to pay it back either. That's just a not to exceed amount.
And Drew, and that's just the interest only on the construction loan?
The construction loan will be interest only because it will be paid off by USDA.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Okay. Thank you so much, Tobias.
All right.
We appreciate you coming tonight to be a part of our meeting. And I think it's wonderful for our community can also hear the conditions and know that we were successful in getting this $17 million loan for our public safety building. So thank you, sir.
All right, thanks a lot, Tobias.
Thank you, Tobias.
Yeah, goodbye.
Thanks for working with us.
Okay. I believe that's all I got. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, I have another proclamation for this evening. Whereas the Town of Hope Mills is concerned about the issue of domestic and teen dating violence in the state of North Carolina, and whereas October's National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, which began in 1981, to connect battered women's advocates across the country, and whereas statistics show on average, three women are murdered by their intimate partners every day, and whereas domestic violence affects millions, both women and men of every race, religion, culture, and status, whereas the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence reports that nine times as many women are murdered by a man they know as are killed by strangers, and whereas sexual abuse is also a form of domestic violence, and whereas statistics show our youth are enduring dating violence as early as age 13 and show half of reported date rapes occur among teenagers, whereas nearly three out of four Americans personally knows someone who is or has been a victim of domestic violence. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the Town of Hope Mills. And I encourage our citizens to take a stand, support survivors, and speak out against domestic violence all month long. Next, we have, and I apologize before I ever say your name. We have a special presentation from Stephanie Sakowiat. I knew it. I can tell you. But anyway, she's a domestic violence specialist. She's with the North Carolina Judicial Branch. And she's going to present information about remote domestic violence filing site in Hope Mills. And if you'll please correct your name for me so that, I don't know how to say it next time. I should have asked early.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Stephanie Sakowiat.
All right.
My maiden name was Winter. I know at this moment, you're all thinking, what were you thinking? Love rules. That's what I was thinking. And Mr. Sakowiat won my heart over, so it's Sakowiat.
Sakowiat.
I have a presentation that I typically do. I do this all over the country. I do it all over the state. But for our purposes tonight, I think that this is probably much too comprehensive and it's more information than what we need. What is the time allotment? Because I am also an attorney. I could talk for days. How much time you got? 10 minutes, 15? What's your pleasure?
Whatever it takes for you to cover the subject because this is important. And it's also something that I believe, since we are live, that there'll be more people that'll be paying attention, so.
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate that.
We need to know whatever you can tell us.
Okay. So I'll start by this. Thank you for your invitation to be here. I appreciate you reaching out to me, ma'am, and seeing what we do here in Cumberland County on the state level. I work for the Administrative Office of the Courts. I am the domestic violence specialist. And my particular baby is this. It's an electronic filing program that serves this county currently. Cumberland County came on in 2018. June of 2018, we started in this county by initiating an electronic filing process. What that means is this. A victim of violence does not have to go to the courthouse to file for a protective order. We know that the most dangerous time for a victim of violence is the timeframe between getting what's called an ex parte, an emergency order, that covers them for a 10-day time period until they can return to court and get the more comprehensive order that mandates a hearing. We all know due process, we're required to notice and an opportunity to be heard. That's the foundation of our principle of justice. So what happens is, in that 10-day and timeframe, you have your sheriff's deputies out looking for these individuals to serve them. These are all very archaic and dangerous methodologies that risk a lot of lives, not only the victim's life, but it's also risking the perpetrator's life. It's risking the lives of law enforcement and our court personnel as well and our advocates because nobody really understands how this thing is moving. So in 2013, in Alamance County, they started an electronic system that allows for a victim to go to a DV agency, as provided under our statutes, and apply for a protective order. The ex parte, then, can be heard from that facility. So it allows someone to interface with our judicial system from a safe, remote, secure location. They don't have to go to court for that ex parte, which means they don't have to take their children. Because I'm a firm believer that children have no business in court. They don't have any business listening to what has gone on between their parent and the perpetrator, who may be their other parent. And they don't need to listen to all of the other cases that go before our courts day in and day out. That somehow normalizes this behavior for them. So we need to keep our children safe, and we need to keep them preoccupied while their parent is being attended to by experts. And our advocates, two of which I have here with me today, are our experts. They know how to do this, and our courts have come to rely on them. Individual meets with an advocate, prepares their documents. It travels electronically to the clerk's office where they are sworn in. It then travels electronically to the judge, who conducts by WebEx, technology you're using here, Zoom, whatever you want to call it. We use WebEx, where they have a hearing. And all the while, the individual is safe with our advocates. So at the end of the day, if that protective order is denied, they can be engaging in safety planning. What's next? What do I do now? If it is granted, those documents then flow electronically back to the clerk's office. The judge has taken action. They then flow to the sheriff's office where they are served. Many sheriff's offices have printers in their vehicles because you know by statute, deputies are the only ones that can serve these documents. And they can print them off, and they can serve defendants on the move. It keeps everybody safer. It also is electronic, which means it's typewritten, which means it's legible. No shade at judges, but they are the worst practitioners, I'm going to call them that, of penmanship known to man, besides doctors. So these are documents that keep everybody safe because you can read them and you can read the conditions. They're also accessible 24/7 in real time in our databases. And if you're sitting in another county, you can access a protective order that is issued in this county 24/7. You've not had to make a single phone call to see the entire file. So it alleviates the burden on our clerk's offices as well. We all know that they are inundated as the gatekeepers of justice. They start the wheel. So with this system, we've expanded to 14 counties that serve almost 52% of the population of this state. Here's what makes Cumberland special. And I love Cumberland County. I'm not just saying it because I'm sitting in the middle of it, although that would not be wise if I chose to say, I love Brunswick County, so I'll go with Cumberland. But here's why. Y'all came to the table, asked to- You all came to the table, asked to be a part of this, and created services out of nothing. You did not have what we typically walk into with a robust DV agency and a partnership that was already starting to turn. You have an excellent task force that knew what was up, and you had the desire to do it. I always had my eye on the prize for Cumberland County because, sitting in the middle of this county and touching a couple of others, is Fort Bragg. We know that Fort Bragg has a domestic violence problem. It's always been an issue to deal with the military and a civil protective order, because there are gun control provisions, and it gets kind of murky. But I thought, gee, wouldn't that be interesting if they decided they wanted to play ball? So we worked, and we worked, and we worked. June twenty eighteen, Cumberland County went live, and they went live utilizing RIG Crisis, volunteers of Cumberland County as their filing site, who stepped up to the plate and made this happen, reinvented themselves to make this happen. Then, we got a call nine months later from Fort Bragg that said, we've been thinking about this, and we think we can make this work. Judge Robert Steele, who I credit with having a very, very firm hand in guiding that, could not have done it without his hard work, is really what made that happen. I think that's fair to say. It involved a fly fishing trip, and I don't want to know what else, but it happened. So here we are, and we're able to brag as a state that we have a civilian process that supplants a military process operating from the largest military installation in the world. No other state in the Union can say that, and it's an amazing thing. After they came on, then Fayetteville PD said, hey, we can do that too. Let's do a scatter diagram, see where our filings come from Cumberland County. We did that. In Fayetteville, obviously your largest filing city, Rayford Road was the largest location for plaintiff filings by zip code. So they have Teresa Curry, who operates out of Fayetteville PD, who files on behalf of victims that come to her, see her at the Rayford Road location. Then, the next area where we looked at the numbers is Hope Mills. You have just over a hundred filings based on plaintiff's zip codes coming from Hope Mills. By far, after Fayetteville, that's the biggest in the county. So what is the option for expanding filing sites? I think that was the question that was posed to me. The bottom line is this, there is a statutory requirement that your filing originator is a DV agency within the confines as understood by our statutes. Okay? We have that, and we have other partnerships that we have developed. It's important to look at the partnership and look at the partner's mission statement to find out if they're a good fit with this program, because it's more than just opening your doors. There are serious considerations when you're making yourselves available as a partner in this endeavor. First of all, it has to be approved by the other partners, because they all do work together quite closely, and communication is key. The other thing is, we have to make sure that there is a basic understanding of the rules, and the rules are, you have to be an organization that provides this type of work, this type of training, your personnel is trained accordingly, and you understand confidentiality, because that is really the hallmark of this work. If we are not able to keep this information confidential, then what are we doing? So we are always in the business of looking at others who want to assist in this endeavor, always. And that's something that I look at every day. Our most recent individual that's reached out and decided to come on board is Camp Lejeune in Ansel County. They're second, you are first. So they don't like that very much, but they always say to me, well, the Army is the Army, and we're the Marines. I don't know what that means exactly, but apparently something important to Camp Lejeune. But with that happening, we look at how do we alleviate pressure on the clerk's office by opening this up to individuals who come from kind of far-flung areas of the county? So does Hope Mills have numbers that support looking at this as an ancillary filing site? Sure, absolutely. I got a number thrown at me today from your police department that they received just over six hundred calls for service. That's a lot. Your town population is what, just under sixteen thousand? That's a lot.
Almost seventeen now.
That's a lot. So what can we do? Well, we have this, and there are options. It obviously requires a much more in-depth discussion and an identification of what your thoughts are in terms of who can come to the table and be a partner in this for accepting victims of violence to come forward and seek assistance to the court. The cost for involvement is de minimis. It's an equipment cost, a personnel cost. We don't charge to be a part of the system, we don't charge for the training, we certainly don't charge for any, it's web-based, so there's no fee associated with it. But it is a possibility, anything's a possibility, I say that all the time. It just doesn't make sense. We are not in the business of supplanting systems that already exist and work. We're in the business of enhancing systems that can be better. So the trick is to identify what your system is. Is it already in place and working, or could it be made better? So that's something that requires taking a very close look at, how you manage these types of things, where the referrals are made to, who makes the referrals, how many are made, things of that nature. So in a very quick nutshell, there it is. I mean, Cumberland is always being bragged about. In fact, I'm doing a WebEx with the National Organization of Victims Assistance just on Cumberland County on Thursday, because this county gets national attention for the work it does and for the work that it does before Bragg. It's a big deal, and you all should be extremely proud of that. It's never been done. When other states say, well, we electronically file, I say, sure you do, but not like we do. So North Carolina is really on the cutting edge of this technology and the usage of this technology, and that's something to be really, really proud of. And if there are ways to invite more to the table, I'm all about inclusiveness. Questions for me?
Ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Stephanie, thank you for traveling and being willing to travel. You told me you would present anytime, anywhere, how many times you need to present, and what you summarized to me is pretty much you need a computer with a camera on it, right? You need to have internet access, and volunteers that generally volunteer between nine and two?
We, we, we're cautious with the usage of volunteers, because it does require them to get security clearance to tap into our system for filing, and we have found that that can be a tricky situation. So it's better to use a stagnant organization. That doesn't mean that volunteers within that organization can't grant, gain access, we've done it in the past. It's just not something that we encourage to be wholly reliant on being staffed by a volunteer organization. It has to be someone that is engaged in the work, and that's what the statute requires. So personnel has to be looked at closely. My suggestion, off the top of my head, is to leverage existing partnerships and see who out there that already performs this work in Cumberland County can work as a resource that can bring Hope Mills into the fold. Is that RIG Crisis? I don't want to commit anything. Is that Teresa Curry with FPD? I don't know the answer to that, but that's where I would start, is looking at existing partnerships and what can be forged out of those. And if not, what kind of MOUs can be created between an organization that exists in this county that can work in partnership with an existing partner to make sure that all of the criteria are met?
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Ma'am.
Yes.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment if I may.
Yes, sir.
I know that the numbers that you've given us are probably just a fraction of what really happens in our county and our state. And I want to thank you guys for everything you do. Your staff seems to be hardworking and covering a lot of area, and yeah, Camp Lejeune is a Marine, but we're at Fort Bragg.
That's right. That's right. I appreciate that, sir, and I would like to say, I really take no credit for this. My staff is me. I appreciate your kind comments, but really, it's the folks that operate in Cumberland County that make this work day to day. I come in, I do my thing, I do jazz hands, I back out. And then I'm usually only back down here if there's something that needs to be addressed, or I'm invited to attend a meeting, or something of that nature. So it really is the community. It is a collaboration, it is a partnership, it is the heart of this community, working for this community. And so my hat is off to all of you for wanting to wade into this and learn more. But the folks at RIG Crisis, they start this churning. The folks at Fayetteville PD, the folks at ACS, they start this work churning, and it's important work. And so I appreciate your kind comments, I know they do too.
I, I happen to be the father of three girls, and I appreciate people stepping forward to take action against predators. And we have a great police chief that stays on top of stuff and tries to keep us in the lower bracket. So I'm sure he'll be continuing to try to do that. So thank you again for coming out, I appreciate that very much. Thank you, ma'am.
It's my pleasure, and it does take a lot of folks that are dedicated to the work, and I, I'm appreciative of them every single day. If they're in the trenches, I sit in Raleigh, well, Clayton, but Raleigh.
Just a thought, and I guess since Chief of Charity is here too, is with the starting point, Ms. Adams, I guess you could weigh in on this too, would a starting point be with our police department and maybe then going from there to who would partner well with them? I do believe it's a need, especially if you're looking at six hundred calls, and I do believe we have some, we've had some domestic violence with children in Hope Mills, especially during these times. So Chief of Charity, would you, would that be something that we could start with you, and maybe you could recommend from your group where we might go, especially since Fayetteville PD is actively involved?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I think, I do believe that there's a need here, and I do believe that if we can work this out, that, and we work closely with Fayetteville PD, and so that's a good, our relationship is good. So that way, I think Chief of Charity would feel comfortable finding out how we could best make this happen in Hope Mills.
I would be happy to do that. I can provide my business card and any time.
Yes, that'd be wonderful.
Would be in contact.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I think another thing is, is we have three high schools in our immediate
area, Grace Creek, Jack Britton, and Southview. And I think those children over there at these schools need to have more protection than what we're able to offer them now, because sometimes stuff slips through the cracks. And like I said, I'm sure there's higher numbers than what you quoted, even in Hope Mills.
Absolutely.
And I think, just chiming in with that, I believe if you have a source and a way of doing this so that you don't have to go to the courtroom, or you don't have to be faced with the person that has been violent, I think that's probably a lot of reasons why a lot of times it's not reported, because the fear of what happens to you after you report it, you know? So I think this would be a good thing for Hope Mills, especially as we grow. And our population, a large part of our new population is military. We have tremendous number of retirees, but we actually have a large number of active-duty military, so I think that's, again, another good reason why we should get on board. Are there any other questions or thoughts?
I got one, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bellflower.
I'd like to thank you, because it was an excellent presentation, but I wanted to share something with you too. As we are here in this room right now at this time, it's probably a good opportunity or a chance that some type of abuse is occurring right now, either verbal or physical. And the sad part about it is, it will go unreported. So I do thank you greatly for coming, and whatever assistance you can provide to citizens would be well welcomed.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. I moved here from Michigan in two thousand twelve, I'm sure that's a shocker, because you can't, you know, understand my accent, but here's the deal. I adopted North Carolina as my new home, and I decided I'm going to do everything in my power to do my very best to serve the citizens of this great state. There are ten point four million of us, and my job is to reach ten point four million. So however I need to do that, I'm going to figure out a way. Where there's a will, there's a way.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate your invitation.
Thank you.
And you'll have my card. If you have any questions, at any time, do not hesitate to ask.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Stephanie, I knew we had something in common, I came here from Michigan too.
Did you?
Yeah. Way back in eighty-two.
Thank you. Next thing on our agenda, I have another proclamation. Whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month educates women about the importance of early detection for breast cancer, and whereas four out of ten North Carolina citizens will be affected by cancer in their lifetime, and whereas since National Breast Cancer Awareness Month's inception, mammography use has doubled and breast cancer deaths rates have declined. However, many women still do not utilize mammography at regular intervals. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jackie Warner, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, to hereby proclaim the month of October twenty nineteen as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And the Town of Hope Mills encourages the citizens of Hope Mills and all women and their families in the community to get the facts about mammography and joining supporting our fellow citizens who are faced with battling cancer. And because this is October Breast Cancer Month, you'll find that many, if you've ever, and this is for the women especially, you'll find if you've ever had, or if you've been to for a regular mammogram, there, you'll find that you start getting your notices right about now, they call to remind you that you need to go. This is very important to me, because two of my best friends, my best friend in high school and my best friend when I started teaching, both are survivors, but both had to go through chemo and radiation treatment. And they're survivors, but it's just, that makes it come home to me, that there's three of us, and of the three of us, two have had to go deal with this. So this is important for all of us to make sure that we're aware and that we do go get those exams. The next thing I have on our agenda is, and I guess Mr. Holland, do you have this, or do I just need to read this information, but you're going to come tell us about it? Have a special certificate of achievement for excellence, and this is special because I know that since it's financial reporting, that you're the ringleader, sir, so please tell us what we've got.
Okay. We have finally gotten our certificate of achievement in financial reporting. Not that we haven't had, not that we haven't had great financial reporting anyways, but we've submitted the last three years, and the first one to get is always the hardest. So this is the first time the Town of Hope Mills has ever gotten a certificate of achievement award for financial reporting. So I'm very proud of this. We finally got it, and it's going to be ongoing. So we renew it every year. It becomes part of, once you get it, it becomes part of the audit report, the certificate. I think you got three pages there, the very first one, I think, if they're in the order, is going to be part of the audit report for future years. So we did get this for last year, June thirty, two thousand nineteen. We'll submit it again this year for June thirty, two thousand twenty, and so forth. So it's a really big deal, it's a really big honor to get this. It's pretty much the highest award you can get for financial reporting from the GFOA, which is the General Finance Officers Association of, it's actually United States and Canada. So it's a pretty big deal, so we're very honored to get this.
Congratulations, sir.
I'd like to give him around the applause.
And just because I was here as a commissioner in two thousand seven, eight, and nine, and at that point in time, we were, I think, two, three years behind in our audits. So just know that we've gone from that record to the times that I've been mayor, we've had perfect audits, but this is really special, because in a year like twenty twenty, to come up with this special award and for it to be something that we can use in our audits from here on out.
Yeah.
You're to be commended. Thank you so much. Great news tonight.
With bond ratings in the future, getting loans, that sort of thing, that you have this award under your belt.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
This award isn't easy to earn. Not every municipality receives this award. It takes a lot of work, a lot of dedication, a lot of energy, and it's the first time that we've earned it, and it's because of the team that works with you, Drew, the four of you.
Yeah, my finance staff, definitely couldn't have done it. It's not just me, it's the whole staff.
And it reflects the exemplary work that each of you do. And I would like to ask my fellow board members, I'm going to make a motion, that plaques and certificates are great to receive. great to receive. I know I have, Dr. McCray has. But when you put some money behind it, it means even more. I'm gonna ask tonight that we, that we approve a merit bonus for each of our four employees at work, you included, in the amount of $500 each, to honor their work in achieving this award. I think it's well earned, and I think you're entitled to it. So I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? First, I think this is something that you learn over time and experience. You can't make a motion to spend money unless you know where the money's coming from.
I'll have to do a budget amendment for that.
Well, you have to have a budget amendment to do that. So prior to getting a second on this, I think you're gonna have to make sure that you've met those requirements. So I'll ask.
It's totally up to y'all, but that would be greatly appreciated.
I mean, there is, there is areas where you can take this money. That's, so we do a budget amendment, the money is there. All right. Okay. So, all right, we have a motion. We have a second. I have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Okay, we have four, one, but we'll...
Okay, well, that is greatly appreciated. Was not expecting that. But again, it is a big deal for the, for the town and, and our staff. And again, we'll continue to do this, submit for that each year. But yeah, the first one's always the hardest to get.
Yeah.
So, all right.
Thank you, sir.
Well, thank y'all.
Uh huh. Next on our agenda, we have public hearings. And our first public hearing is the proposed annexation case number A 2020-05, the Washaroo. This is consideration of possible action on adoption of annexation ordinance A 2020-05. Do we have any, anything we need to discuss?
I would just open the public hearing, and I believe Ms. Starling has...
No, that's the next one.
Oh, that's the next one. Okay, sorry about that.
Okay.
Just open the public hearing, receive comments, and then close the hearing.
So we're not gonna have any kind of presentation, just, okay. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. And this public hearing is to consider the adoption of annexation ordinance A 2020-05. This is located, this new business is located on down Legion Road. It is near the service station that was put in down next to Island Drive. So it's on, on down, sort of, it's in our MIA, but it is further down Legion Road. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this annexation? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this annexation?
Motion to close.
Have a motion to close public hearing. And at this time, do we have anything from the board as far as a recommendation?
Motion to adopt annexation ordinance A 2020-05.
Have a motion to adopt annexation ordinance A 2020-05. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing on proposed annexation case number A 2020-06, and this is Wood Park Lot 7 and 9. At this time, is, and these two lots are located adjacent to where the Washaroo is going in. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this annexation? Seeing none. Is there anyone here would like to speak in favor of this?
I do have some comments.
Okay.
That were submitted.
All righty.
You have a copy of it.
Okay. All righty.
So the first comment I have is from Mr. Charles David Everett, the VP of Acre Engineering Company, 712 East Lake Ridge Road, Raper, NC 28376. And he states, I'm forwarding you the permitting plan for the SS extension, which is the map that I provided you. The plan shows that Lot 9 already has an existing water main on Island Drive and an existing SS lateral out of manhole one at the rear of the property. Since the W and SS is existing on said lot 9, this lot should not be annexed. If you would provide this information to the commissioners at the minute tonight, it would be greatly appreciated. Thanks. In response to that, I received an email from Mr. Samuel Powers with PWC. And he states, as discussed, Lot 9 is required to extend the eight-inch sanitary sewer man across their property per the PWC extension policy since it is capable of serving lots 8 and 7. The existence of the PWC manhole lateral on their property does not preclude this requirement. And he quotes from their policy, FPWC requires all any extensions be installed the entire width of applicant slash developer's property. If such utilities are capable of serving properties of others as may be deemed necessary by FPWC, the existence of the available sewer manhole or water in or sewer manate stubout shall not preclude the requirement to extend name across the width of the property. And he finishes by saying, let me know if you need any additional information from me. Thanks.
Okay.
Mr. Everett also stopped by town hall this afternoon and clarified for me that his biggest concern is that they're not be in, that you, this property not be in limbo, that it's either annexed or it's not. So just to clear that up.
All right. So that would be one explaining why it has to be annexed, and one explaining that they don't really want to be annexed. Anyone else here that would like to speak in reference to this annexation? If not, any discussion, or do I have a motion from the board?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the background, we're talking about annexation Lot 79, is that, is that including everything?
Yes. That takes in, that takes in the, the whole property that's there together.
That includes everything. I'm making a motion, we adopt annexation ordinance A 2020-06.
Have a motion to adopt A 2020-06. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, we have public hearing on proposed annexation case number A 2020-07, Sweetwater subdivision, consideration and possible action on adoption. All right, this Sweetwater has been brought before you previously, and there's been some changes. So at this time, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this annexation? Anyone? You want to speak in favor of the annexation or opposed to the annexation?
In favor.
In favor of the annexation, please come to the microphone, introduce yourself and give your address, please.
My name is, my name is Carl Manning, 328 Kimberwick, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 2839, 28311. I speak in favor of this, and I'm very sorry as to what happened the last time this came before. However, that has been corrected and changed, and we're now working with the partner, with the developer to make that correction. We're working with the two attorneys to try to resolve that issue. So I ask that you approve this annexation. We do have a contract pending right now with the owner of that property, and we are moving forward as, as we speak today.
Yes, sir.
Question, if I may.
Okay.
To the attorney. Should we, should we do anything with this until this is settled? I know it's been before us once, and we had to go back on this. And according to what this gentleman is saying is that it's still being handled. You say it's handled, but nothing's finalized. So should we even move forward with this or postpone?
This is the corrected without that property. So this is corrected.
This is not including the property.
This is not including that property.
So that's been settled. You've, you've looked at it. Everything's good. It's been settled. It's, it's good to go.
I have dug deeply into the details on this current annexation, and they're all in order. The other five acres that were in question have been removed.
Okay. Okay. That was my question.
You'll have to take further.
Yeah.
I'll have to bring that. I'll have to bring that another time separately.
Right. Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close.
At this time, anyone have any questions in reference to this? All questions answered. Do we have an action?
Motion to adopt annexation ordinance 2020-07.
Have a motion to adopt annexation ordinance 2020-07. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Thank you, Mr. Manning, for coming this evening. Next, we have public comments. I do have one that has signed up to be in person. And do you have some that are gonna be read?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll start with Maria Aurora. If you'll come to the microphone and give your address, and then you may address, and you can take your mask down, because I know it's difficult to talk. Okay.
Madam Mayor, company. Last time I forgot to greet you. Sorry.
It's okay.
Last time I spoke, drop a hypothetical question, if the construction behind us by the golf course was a done deal or not. By, by this time, I'm convinced that it's a done deal, because if the developer was able to purchase the property, I mean, he's not gonna lose his money. But is there a way, or where we need to go to find out the proposal, where the lines are gonna be, what are they intending to do? I need to know, because we need to program if we have to move again or not. I'm not willing to leave fence to fence with 177.
114.
Units. We're not willing to do that.
Okay. Where we are, and that we, I think we've answered this several times, as far as the, our town manager and also our planner. Where we are right now is the 30 acres where the current parking lot is up there belongs to one developer. 20 acres belongs to the, the developers that purchased it from the YMCA. And those developers along, the two sets of developers are having meetings among themselves, because the way the property is divided, one has a skinny amount at the beginning, and one has a wide amount. They're negotiating how they can share that property so that both of them will benefit, and then have a driveway on Golf View. So the goal is the driveway on Golf View. We have not had, the town has not had another committee meeting. And I did talk to Eddie Maynor today, because he called and representative of your group, he called and requested to, where were we? Had anything changed since our last information that we got from Mr. McLaughlin and from our town manager's report? And nothing has changed. Once they come to their agreement on how they're gonna do their access, then we'll meet with them, because we're a part of this, because we need access off of that Golf View driveway to our 90 acres. And so most people think that the driveway that's up there, where the parking lot is, the old parking lot, that's not ours.
Well, the parking lot is down, down the street, but...
The 20 acres run behind your property. They run all the way, the 30 acres run parallel to it. So the goal is to have a driveway on Golf View. That's the goal, for both developments. They're working together to share the front property. DOT met with us when we had our committee meeting with the town. And at that time, there is an understood that there's only gonna be able to have a driveway in that area. You can't have three on Golf View. So that's why those two sets of developers have to work together on sharing that first, and it'll be a town street coming off of Golf View to those, to that developer.
So if I'm following you correctly, we're gonna have a road behind our fence?
You, you, right now, we don't know. We haven't got a revised site plan. We know that there's, we know the original plan had 114 townhomes or duplexes that were gonna be built on that 20 acres. Now, that corrected site plan, that could change. And then the property that's adjacent to it, the 30 acres, that will be part of that site plan they're trying to develop. So right now, we're in a stage of waiting for them to come to their... And once they do, we'll have, we'll not only have a committee meeting that will be Zoom like before, but we'll also make sure that the community knows what's happening. It won't be something that, you know, won't be, you won't be left out.
It won't be overnight.
And, and no, in other words, you're not gonna, if, you're not gonna see a road being cut and, and not know about. You're gonna know as soon as we know the site plans.
Oh, no, I know that. But we like to plan ahead.
Yeah. Soon as they, soon as they come back to, with an agreement between those two sets of developers, then the town will be involved in what we're gonna do as far as our part of that.
Do you have any say in on what they decide to do?
It's their property, and they have to make those...
They do whatever, yeah.
In other words, we, we have to approve their site plans. The board has to approve their site plans. But until they bring that site plan back for reconsideration, right now, we, we don't have anything to approve. And that, there's not anything definite about what it's gonna look like. We, we, you can always look at a site plan and, and have conditions or whatever. But it's very difficult to, in other words, it, once they buy the property, it's kind of like when you bought your house, you know, once it starts, you, we have to look at all the conditions that go with it. So right now...
Source is you?
The, 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 right now, what happens is the board makes that final decision when it's, the site plan's brought back before the board. And it hasn't, we don't have a timeline. Do you have, Ms. Adams?
No.
You got something new?
On the driveway.
Okay.
Portion, not the development itself. And we'd be happy to, I think the, the first submittal of the development, the site plan, was disseminated on Facebook. So, or if you can provide an email address to our town clerk, she'd be happy, more than happy to send you a copy of the original site plan.
Oh, okay.
But now, again, that may change, as the mayor said, because that plan shows coming off of Cranton.
The one you have?
This, okay. So that is...
That's the, that's the original.
That's the original. But the goal is to have it coming off of Golf View. So not Cranton.
Well, yes, hopefully. And it sounded promising. But still, I wanna know how much space I'm gonna have behind me.
Well, as soon as that site plan is brought back to the board for approval, then you'll be able to see. And that, we don't, like I said, we're letting the developers now, because I guess most people in Golf Acres didn't realize that there was 50 acres of land behind you before you got to the town property. And that's where these two developers are having to decide. And the good news, I guess, for everybody is that they are at the table and having those discussions, because if they both work together, there's so many things that they can do together, that would benefit, like stormwater features and those kinds of things. So that's why, as soon as they come to some type of understanding about how they're gonna share that front property, then we'll, we'll be able to, to give you more information.
If you would like, Madam Mayor, I can provide the update that Mr. McLaughlin provided to me this afternoon.
Okay.
So last week, we reached out to the developer and the engineer prior to my manager's report going out. And there was no update at that time. So the information that was provided in my manager's update was information that I believe I had sent to you all previously in the email. It was the same information. Mr. McLaughlin emailed them and called them and then reached out twice today, late this afternoon. They did get back with him and apologized that they had not, you know, gotten back to us sooner, but that they had been experiencing some scheduling conflicts between the two parties that are, you know, trying to work out their portion of the property has nothing to do with the town. But that they are planning on having a meeting tomorrow. And then hopefully, after that meeting, what will come from that is they will be prepared to send plans to the town for us to look at, and we'll convene another committee meeting. And I would like to emphasize, because there's been so much talk, that the town has not been engaged in secret meetings. We've not had a copy of the plans. We've not paid an invoice for the plans, for our portion of the one-third. And we've not been privy to any plans. So I just want to... So I just want to, you know, reiterate that. I've explained that to Commissioner Bellflowers a couple of times. And I think the issue has been the two parties have been trying to work out their end of, and having, they've had one party that was out of state for a, you know, period of time. And so they've experienced technical difficulties in those parties getting together. But hopefully, they'll have a meeting tomorrow and we're very hopeful of what will come from that.
Right. And, and just to reassure you, the mayor does, I, and I, I know when I say this, there's somebody out there in, in the internet land that's gonna say something, but the mayor, yeah, yeah.
If it's on Facebook, it's.
Yeah, well, see, the mayor, the, yeah. The mayor does, the mayor does not have a vote. And I speak for the town. It's not that I can say this is what's going to happen, but I try to answer questions to the best of my knowledge. And generally speaking, most of my knowledge comes from our town manager. So when I am asked by news sources or citizens or whatever, then I speak for the town. The actual voting on this has to be done by these five members of the board and the site plan has to come before them. I have not met with any developers other than when we had our committee meeting. And I am not getting any kickbacks or any monetary gain because of this development. Uh, I, like you, am concerned and that's why I asked if we could set up a committee because in the past, we've allowed things to move without the other parties, meaning the two neighboring developers, if they can talk, we can get more accomplished by letting them work things out. And then it makes it easier for that Golf View access. So that's why, if anything, the goal was from the town was to make this a smooth transition to Golf View and a driveway that then would benefit the town too, because otherwise, we don't have a driveway either. We've got to share that one driveway and the best thing to do is have one town street going in and then, you know, everybody gets a street to their, whatever, their properties. But we will, if, if we meet, whenever that, we have to give you forty-eight hours notice for that committee to meet. When that committee meets, I imagine that at this point in time, we might even could allow public to come in, but not to be, in other words, they can come and see it, but just like with any other committee meeting. Um, but there wouldn't be any interaction. It would just be the people on the committee.
Is it put in your website?
Yes. And what I would, what I would say is that since we know that the, you know, I can tell you that my email, uh, since Thursday, I've been asked multiple times, how are you gonna vote? We want you to tell us, how are you gonna vote? We want you to oblige yourself. So know that we've got all those contacts that we've been getting, that it's real simple for us to send something out through next door or by those emails that we already have or the key people that have been heading this up. So we'll get that information out. Uh, we're not gonna let you go without knowing what's gonna happen.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, thank you.
And thank you for coming this evening. We appreciate your concerns and we understand. We're just trying to work through it.
I'm concerned.
Yes. We're hoping we can.
Because our role is, I mean, on and off rentals, um, people that don't. But I have spoken to all the neighbors and they have submitted online, so.
Yeah. And we're, and we're listening.
But it's hard to see the interest and the concern and, but then there's one neighbor that is already gone as soon as everything exploded and was like, oh, wait a minute.
Well, as soon as we have some definite answers, we'll, and like I said, as soon as that, our committee can meet again, we'll put that information out to reassure you guys.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for coming this evening. Uh, Ms. Starling, do you have, that's the last I have that came to speak, but do you have some emails to read?
Yes, I have some written comments that were emailed to me. And the order I'm gonna read them in is slightly different than what I handed you guys because the, I'm gonna read them in the order that they came. But the last two, but the two on top will actually be the last. First one I have is from Marion Caldwell, sixty-six oh five, St. Jack Drive, Hope Mills. We request that your position on complete and permanent closing of Crampton Road, Hope Mills, need to close it for any access other than the entrance and exit into the Golf Acre and Brightmore neighborhoods. I am requesting a simple yes on closing Crampton Road. I do appreciate those commissioners who responded to and wanted to support this issue. Those are the commissioners who really understand the Hope Mills small town community. This is extremely important to those of us who live in these neighborhoods. The next comment is from Richard Letkow, five-seven-five-eight, Crenshaw Drive. Mayor and town commissioners, as of today, we have four hundred and thirty-nine petitioners to not open Crampton Road for access to the Par Four Village Complex. Since late June, when the residents of Golf Acres and Brightmore first became aware of the developer and the town trying to sneak plans through to build an apartment complex on previously owned YMCA property, there has been very little to no information to the outcome of this issue. We have been asked to trust what is going on, but we have not been given anything to base this trust on. We have been asked to trust the process, the committee, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I face my lack of trust on several things. First was the way this was handled initially. The citizens of Golf Acres and Brightmore were one week away from this being a done deal with no input from this community. You see the reaction to that lack of transparency. Secondly, the town just got done approving, spending over three thousand dollars for a redefinition of the plans. Again, we have not been allowed to see what's going on in this matter. Mr. McLaughlin indicated due to the length of time until Hope Mills will be using your property, we were not included. Just a reminder, in the first and only Golf View roadway study committee meeting, there was a point where Mr. Sisko and Mr. McLaughlin indicated the town had planned on building a road out of a temporary parking lot that would run along Mr. George's property and that cross-access piece could be used by the Par Four to meet the fire code requirements of two entrances slash exits into the property. In an email dated nine-four-twenty-twenty, Mr. McLaughlin indicated that has not yet been materialized as a definite design option. This is very concerning, without that option, in my opinion, two options would remain. One would be to open Crampton Road or for the developer to put sprinklers in the one hundred and fourteen Par Four units. Why should we be guessing? We request that the developers or their representatives give the citizens of Hope Mills and upay to this very long process at the end of one of the one and only Golf View study, Golf View Study Committee meeting, twenty-four July twenty twenty, when discussions turned to when they would be next. The consensus was to have another committee meeting within days and present the findings to the board at the third August twenty twenty meeting, almost two months later in Zilch. Mr. Bellflowers has tried twice to close Crampton Road permanently. Both times it was not voted, not, it was voted not to be voted on. We, the voters, will not forget those that did not support our efforts to close Crampton Road. The next comment is from Lori, S.T.A.H.N.K.E. Her address is five-seven-oh-one, Trevino Street, Hope Mills, two-three-four. To the mayor, Mayor Protem, Board of Commissioners, I have been a resident of Golf Acres for nearly twenty years to, since two thousand and one. I am writing regarding the request to permanent closure of Crampton Road. The Par Four Village Complex should not even be considered until the current traffic congestion at nearby roads and intersections in the intermediate, immediate area can be eliminated. Gridlock occurs all throughout the town limits with just a single vehicle accident or traffic signal malfunction, which adds to the previously stated congestion issue, but is also especially concerning where emergency response might be needed during this time. The entrance for the proposed Par Four Village Complex to be on Golf View Road and not previously existing Golf Acres neighborhood on Crampton Road. The added traffic is a safety concern for all residents, especially families and children who use Crampton Road as an access to Rockfish Elementary School. The dead end on Crampton Road should remain as such and be completely permanently closed. I live on the opposite end of Trevino Street with no speed bumps. We already have a lot of traffic in our area. While we are not in the immediate area where the proposed complex would join Golf Acres on Crampton Road, there will be additional traffic in that area of neighborhood from the new complex. Tenants looking to find an alternative speed bump route to get in, to get to and from the complex. We have a four-way stop in place with newly painted flat lines on the road at each stop, at each of the stop signs with these signs in line saying, as will not exist if there are few people take the time to actually slow, actually stop or even slow down before speeding through the area. This has also been a safety concern for us for a very, very long time. And the addition of more traffic will make this situation even more dangerous. I have watched several of the commissioner meetings on YouTube where my neighbors have voiced their ongoing concerns over this project in sp- in person and via emails read, read by Mrs. Starling. The lack of concern and force of empathy and the multiple snide remarks to the residents, some of the very people who have been elected into office to represent them is, to say the least, disheartening and infuriating. It is our neighborhood that will be impacted by the opening of Crampton Road to the complex. How would you feel about this if it was your neighborhood? Since none of you, the commissioners, the Protem or mayor, live in Golf Acres, as indicated by the town's website, you need to listen to the concerns of the residents by Golf Acres and Brightmore and support us on this issue by voting as if it was going to impact you, your family and your neighborhood. Anything other than a five-zero vote for permanent closure of Crampton Road is completely unacceptable. Thank you for your time. This is from Initial K and Initial J Schultz at five-seven-oh-six, Trevino Street in Hope Mills. Hello, my husband and I purchased a home on Trevino Street and the Golf Acres neighbors it about a year ago and greatly enjoyed our time there. We enjoy morning runs through the development and evening walks with our dogs, an opportunity we haven't had in our previous locations. We have recently become aware of and concerned about the potential opening of our neighborhood to additional traffic to new apartment complexes. One of the reasons we purchased this house in particular was because we appreciated the design of the neighborhood to discourage heavy traffic. We would like, we would be incredibly disappointed to lose our favorite feature. We hope you will consider those in Golf Acres who, like us, value our privacy and safety when coming, when making this difficult decision. Best, A, the J and K Schultz. Last comments are from Angela from Anna Cohen, last name G.E.R.E.N.A. The population of Hope Mills is moderate and is a safe area for pets, friends, visitors and family for now. Regarding the future of Hope Mills, North Carolina, keeping and making our Hope Mills of North Carolina beautiful, safe, excellent school by keeping fifteen students per classroom and integrating curriculum for excellence to help our children and young people gain the knowledge, skills and attributes needed for life in the twenty-first century, which in turn, we will have a high rate of students graduating and moving on to college. My wife and I are very concerned on the following. One, this one-one-four unit duplex community apartment will only add to an already existing traffic problem with speeding and volume inside our development. Two, since more people, most people nowadays have two cars and are two worker households, that will mean two hundred and forty-eight and plus more cars belonging to potential residents will join the traffic during the early mornings. Three, one of our main concerns is not only traffic, but the possibility of increased crime. Four, the trouble of politically corrected, correct mandated solutions to social concerns is that they don't take into consideration the impact of the existing local governments on the existing local governments. The prime example being the local school system population, police, fire, sweep, street sweeping and snow removal by overcrowded classrooms. Six, children's economic and social outcomes, both during their childhood and in their adult years largely depend on the circumstances into which they are born in. Seven, our elderly and our veterans that have called Hope Mills, North Carolina, their place to retire, has their safety to be, has their safety be taken into consideration? Eight, the negative impact, uh, to our children of Hope Mills' safety and education, has this be taken into consideration? Nine, our way of life. Ten, property values. We strongly oppose to this one hundred and fourteen unit duplex community apartment development in our neighborhood. Instead of building a unit duplex of a hundred and fourteen apartments, how about converting the land into agricultural education farm program? Thank you for taking this time and reading my email. We gladly appreciate it. Anna L. and Anna Angel L. and Anna Cohen Gerena. And that ends the public comments. And this is the last time that I read public comments since we have opened up the meeting. Uh, unless someone has some qualified reason that they need me to read them and they can't be here in person, if they're ill or something for that effect, I'm happy to read them. But now that the public have allowed in, uh, there's no reason for me to continue.
Okay. And we can do the public comments like we did before. If there is twenty-five in this, in the room, unless it changes to the normal numbers, we can have them, we can, we'll have to have it so they can come and, and take a seat or come in and then go back out. So the understanding would be at our next meeting, which would be in October, that public comments would be in person unless there's some type of health issue. And we, again, appreciate those that have shared and those that have come tonight in reference to this. Um, and we hope that we've answered, answered your questions with the previous comments that were made.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I know we don't normally do this, but I'm gonna try something as deeper to go over. I wanna make a motion that we permanently close Crampton Road.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Um, and I'll ask our attorney, um, the legalities of this at this time with what we're trying to accomplish. Can you help as far as?
We can't do it, I mean, you have to, there's a statutory process that we have to follow that involves noticing a public hearing and all that. We can start the process, but we can't do it tonight. It takes a, it's a statutory process.
Okay, I'll withdraw that motion if Mr. Bellflowers withdraw his second and make a motion that we ask the town staff and attorney to start it, whatever we have to have for a, a public hearing.
To notice a public hearing, I suppose would be the first step.
Can we do that, Madam Mayor?
I, I'm leaning on the attorney to give us the guidance in this because of the process that we're currently going through. And I know that, uh, I, I guess you'll have to advise the town.
Uh, well, so the statute, let's see, is one sixty-eight, two ninety-nine. We first would have to adopt a resolution declaring our intent to close the street and call for a public hearing. So I guess tonight we could adopt a resolution declaring our intent to do it and calling for a public hearing. Would be, would be the first step.
A motion. Okay, then I'll make a motion. We, uh, approve a resolution to adopt a public hearing about closing that portion of Crampton Road for one street for all, forever.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Uh, yes, Mayor Protem.
I have a question. I thought that, that there was supposed to be, and I, I'm not, I don't know the terminology, there was supposed to be some kind of gate or something put up for fire and safety access. Or you wouldn't open a road for traffic, but you needed this, this fire and safety gate access. And that's why I thought that we cannot close the road. I further thought that if the developer, if they're in negotiation with this, um, and I know we talked about this in the last meeting, if the developer is in, um, communication with the other property owner and we close this street, we could be sued. And nobody would know about it because it would be in closed session. So is it, is this not, and that, that, that's, that's been my only drawback. I, I knew we probably, I was hoping we'd come to a resolution, but if we close the road, are we still gonna be able to have that gate there for fire and safety access?
That I would have to defer, I think you're closing it to the public. So I'd have to defer to fire department, public safety on whether we still have access. or. I, I would think that we could. Um, you're just closing it as a public right of way. Um, whether we could be sued is a, is a different question, of course, but I, I don't think anyone at this point has any vested rights, um, that they could have anything more than sort of taxpayer standing to challenge. But there is a, there is a process in the statute that any person who re- by closing can appeal to, uh, to court. So if, you know, if someone did want to challenge the closing of the road, there, there is a process in the statute by which they can challenge the closing by appealing the board's decision to the court. That would probably be the process by which it would go, go to court.
And if the two developers don't come to some type of agreement, then the one developer that would not have access, the original twenty-acre developer, is there anything there? I mean, the, the goal is for the two developers to come to some type of agreement so that then they both have access to Golf View. Right now, as it stands, one of them has access. So, um, that's, I think.
You cannot landlock someone and deny them access. So at the very least, they would have an implied easement which would allow them to use, uh, use whatever access is available to, to access their property. So that, you can't landlock someone by closing roads, haul roads into, into these properties, but, uh, they would, they would then probably, most likely have what's called an implied easement, which means that they, they would have the right to use the access if they were otherwise landlocked.
Okay, so any other questions or just, yes, sir?
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Marley. I think you were.
Yes, I, um.
You were next.
I, I got a comment and, and kind of the discussion. Um, I just want everybody to know that I have read every email that's come to me. This town has been transparent fully. I've listened to every phone call, every person that has called me. But in the faith of good business and in the faith of this committee that we formed to help the residents of those neighborhoods come to a, a solution among all parties to benefit those neighborhoods primarily. Mr. Legg, um, Mr. Bellflower, I, I cannot support that motion tonight. I would be, I would be willing to entertain a motion like that a little better after we complete the process, but in, in good faith and doing business and doing business the right way with these developers, I think we need to see the process that we started within through. And, and I stand with each and every one of you to live in those neighborhoods. I want you to know that from, from the bottom of my heart. I, I feel your struggle. I live it every day in the neighborhood I'm in. Trust me, I know where you're coming from. I can't even walk in my front yard for people riding through my front yard in cars to cut off a stop sign 'cause they don't wanna go over the speed bump that's in front of my house. I can't allow my son to play in the front yard for fear of him getting hit by a car. I understand your concern. I have tons of traffic cutting, cutting through my neighborhood to bypass Main Street every day, every morning. I have an apartment complex right beside me that dumps out every day, every morning, every night, every afternoon. I don't, can't tell you how many times I've replaced my mailbox for cars hitting my mailbox, passing other cars on the road, cutting through my yard to pass cars. I feel your pain, but in good business and doing good business and the reputation of this town and this board, I cannot support a motion like that until we finish the process with this committee. And I thank each and every one of y'all for your concern and coming tonight. I appreciate your comments and that's my thoughts. I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Marley. Dan, you're, you're correct about the easement. Uh, it also, that easement also applies to the town property that we have on the golf course. And that, and that's that fenced lot that we have with the building. So it applies to us as well, like it does to the other two property owners. Every, every zoning case or site plan or annexation that comes before this board, I'm gonna tell you how I look at, how I do it. I look at every one, I go to every neighborhood and I go walk through the neighborhood and I, even though I may not live there, how, my first question is, how is this action going to impact the people that live in this neighborhood? That's my first question. And that's on everything, even the ones tonight. This first surfaced back in June and when it did surface and I saw the site plan, I was there. I drove right out to that stub and I parked there and I said, how is this going to impact this neighborhood? Now bear in mind, there was no committee formed in June. None. Not even a proposed committee was formed in June or when this site plan was first, first offered up. That's an important issue right there. No committee at all. No partnership, no working it out. It was a straight entrance exit through Cramp, through that Crampton stub by developer. That's facts, sir. And I stood, and I stood there in that crossway and I said, how would this impact me if I lived in any one of these houses on this road? The safety concerns, the police coverage, and then I looked at the roadways, which we maintain, the town taxpayers maintain those roadways, and I'm thinking of all the construction equipment that's gonna go in and out of that small stub into building a hundred and fourteen complexes and the damage it's gonna have on those roads we, you, the taxpayers, maintain. And then all the safety concerns surrounding that. Now since that, we've had the committee and we've also had a contract too, that this board approved as a partnership, and I have a copy of that contract as each board member. And in that contract that was approved by this board, it does not mention the use of Crampton at all. Isn't, the, Crampton Road is not even used in that contract approved by this board. And even though the negotiations and whatever meetings is going on now, all involve the use of Golf View, all of it, everything. So I cannot see at all, and this is why I propose not once but twice, and now three times tonight, to clo, to start the process. That's all we're asking to do is to start the process. It's not, it's not a done deal tonight, but we're asking to start the process to permanently close that stub as a public right of way. And that will answer your question, Mayor Pro Tempore. Can it be used, uh, you know, as a fire entrance and exit only, gated only? Yes. That's the only permit. But what we're asking here is to permanently close it. And I don't see, unless there's somebody here that wants to tell me, I can't see why not.
One, just to answer your.
And you may wanna challenge me, Mayor.
I'm not gonna challenge. I just wanna give you some.
And I'm ready.
I wanna give, no, I wanna give you some information.
Okay.
Just information. In that contract, the goal of that committee, which the idea for that committee came from the concerns of the community. Prior to that, that site plan would've been on the agenda to be voted on that night. So we got it removed from the agenda and then we did something that we could not have possibly done based on prior information, and that was to get the other developer to the table. Because we actually built a parking lot because we said we had no conversation with the owner of those thirty acres. So the goal was to get those people to the table to talk, benefit the town because now they can share responsibility for fifty acres that's gonna impact us. We didn't, in that contract, the goal is to get the access on Golf View.
Okay.
If that contract falls through, if there is no driveway approved by DOT and is set aside for us and the two developers, then what do they fall back on? So the goal is, the process is, the contract is, the Golf View driveway. Where we are in time is trying to get those negotiations to take place. You've negotiated with one of those developers because you're the one, along with previous board members, that got us a lease agreement on that. You are also the one that told us that we could have no more discussions. He did not wanna rent, he did not wanna talk to us. He's at the table. He's talking. And as long as he's talking, it benefits the town and it benefits the other developer. We don't want to get him away from the table. It's not that we're patronizing developers, where the goal is a Golf View driveway. And the Golf View driveway is on one developer's land right now and what we have got to work through is getting that driveway approved and then a stem going off for the twenty acres, the stem straight ahead that'll be the man that owns it now, and then a stem to the right that will be the town's. And those will then become town streets. My understanding is through DOT, that meeting that we had, that the town would have three additional, you know, the driveway in becomes a town street. So that's where we are. That's why when you talk about business and, and you talk about working through things, the contract was set up for the goal being the Golf, Golf View driveway. And that's why I believe, um, if you look at the, if you look at what the, the land looks like up there, you'll see that this agreement needs to go through, um, or what ends up happening is the Golf View driveway is, is not gonna be a reality. And that's why I think Commissioner Bellflowers, I'm not gonna, I, I, I'm speaking in terms of business, I'm speaking in terms.
Oh, I am too.
I'm speaking in terms of integrity and I'm speaking in terms of not trying.
So don't challenge that, 'cause I am too.
Well, what I'm saying, but where we are now is we're in a basis of that, those discussions with the intent of having a driveway on Golf View.
So, so tell me, how does that impact starting the process to close Crampton Road stuff? Tell me, how does that impact?
You, you, you could probably have e- either one of the developers deciding that they didn't wanna be a part of the conversation anymore.
Still, how does that impact?
And then we spend taxpayer money fighting a lawsuit by that developer when he decides to sue the town. So then we spend taxpayer money in a frivolous lawsuit.
I don't think that's the case, Commissioner Marley. Don't, don't think it is at all.
Where else is the money gonna come from?
No, I don't think it's, I mean, I keep hearing this, this lawsuit. Tell me about how this works.
The, the developer, developer to the twenty acres does not have driveway. He has an easement.
That's right.
But he could not use that easement for a driveway because DOT is not gonna allow another driveway there. It's too close to Sushack. It's also, when you look at the big scheme of things, when they actually change what Rockfish, Golf View and Rockfish Road look like up there at the intersection, it's gonna impact everything in the traffic area up there. So what we got, we did something that hasn't been done before. We got DOT to the table. We got the developers to the table.
Okay.
We got, we got people to the table so we can pre-plan instead of us in being impacted by decisions that are made by developers or by other people. This is having planning so that we are planning not only for right now, but for the future. And that future is also including what we need is access to our driveway. Now, we had this argument, if you'll recall, and I'm gonna get off the soapbox, we had this argument when you wanted to release that parking lot and you wanted to build a new parking lot. And I asked, because it went on and on and on about how we're gonna get to the metal building. And when y'all approved the parking lot where it is, I said, there's no access to the metal building. And that, but the whole goal for having that extra parking lot was to have access to all of our property. So sometimes, uh, you've got to look at the, the best pitch for everybody. We've spent money out there already, a great deal of money. We're, we've invested right now no money until we find out what happens with this agreement. And this agreement could mean that because of the two developers needing that access, um, it might cost the town less for our access. So it's just good business. I don't, I don't know how to describe it any better than that. And I would, I would purposely tell you that the goal is a driveway on Golf View. That's our goal and that's the goal of the committee. And that's why patience, yes, there's nothing happening right now except conversations between those people. And when the town's brought in, it's gonna be because they've come to an agreement among themselves.
If we're talking about business, Madam Mayor, I don't think there's anything higher than protecting the safety and the integrity of those two neighborhoods.
And that's what, that's our.
And we can do this right tonight by taking and approving this action to start the process.
That's our goal, Commissioner Bellflowers, that's our goal.
That is the goal. Then why not, why do not, why are we not?
Well, I don't have a vote on that. I can, any more discussion?
Oh, okay.
No, sir, I just go, gave you the reasoning behind the committee. Any one member of this board could've had the suggestion coming up with a committee. The reason that I thought this would be a good idea was because reaching out to everybody that has some interest in this is the best interest of the town. Because now you've got everybody at the table. You're not having to strong-arm anybody, you're not having to tell them what you can and can't do. We're letting them have those discussions. They come back with a, a, a site plan that benefits them as far as how they're gonna develop that property and it benefits the town because now we have that driveway on Golf View. Um, any other discussion, I'm, I'm not gonna talk anymore 'cause I know that it's important for the commissioners to speak. Commissioner Edwards or, or Mayor Pro Tempore or anyone else have more comments?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to say that I do agree that the road needs to be closed. Um, you all may not like my timeline, but I would like the, the committee to come back. And I know, Mr. Luton, now I've talked to you and emailed you before and you say you don't trust the process and you say if you're wrong, you apologize. And I hope that you are wrong. But right now, I think it's just best that we not, it's not that I don't agree, I just, I just would like for the committee to come back with the information first and that's for all of the citizens there. I don't live on your street, but I, I, I'm a representative, I take it seriously of your community. So even though I don't experience the traffic directly on your street, I do hear your concerns. And so I hope that you all will trust the process and I hope that you are wrong.
And, and as we've been told at least four hundred and thirty-nine times, you hold us accountable.
Four hundred and forty.
Okay, four hundred and forty times, however many times, you hold us accountable. And believe me, because you hold us accountable, we are accountable. That's why we're trying to get this process to take place and to come with a reasonable solution. And that's the goal. And it's, it's not any other thing but to have that happen. Our children are very important to us. Our schools are the pride of our, of our town. People move here because of our parks and because of our schools. We do not wanna endanger anybody. We don't wanna put us in a situation where we have to, to worry about the neighborhoods and being able to get from place to place. But, but where we are right now, we wanna make sure that we have some way of knowing what is going to happen to those fifty acres. Uh, and I think that's important.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Come to the microphone, please.
Yes.
I'm just, I'm just curious, uh. You've got the one road that's coming out of the temporary parking lots y'all have down there and then you're gonna have one road coming off for the three different areas back there, correct? For the two developers?
Right now, my, the, my, right now, my understanding, and Ms. Adams will have to explain that, but I think the temporary driveway is exactly that temporary, the dri, the original, that's why I was concerned about, um, the temporary parking lot. Our plan shows a driveway at Fairway.
Right.
And the other one would be up there at the, the parking lot where the Mr. George's parking.
What I'm getting at, and I think most people are really concerned with, first, we don't know what's going on, really, to be honest with you. It's been stretched out.
Right now, we don't either.
I know you're saying you don't, okay, you don't. Uh, uh, but we don't either. But the thing we're worried about more than anything, we don't want Crampton opening up for any reason. That's why we've been hanging these things around our neck, coming to you, bothering you about this. We want it closed permanently. We should've done this a long time ago. If we realized what was coming up in the future, we'd have done this a long time ago. The thing's been there ever since that addition was built. And I suppose Mr. Tyson, Bill Tyson, wanted it to be for a parking lot for his, for the golf course over there, you know, to go in there and they could play golf or whatever they wanted to do. But it's sit there dormant the whole time, nobody even thought about it. But my, going back to this thing about the roads, uh, I'm seeing, and I said it in my letter today, uh, when I mentioned the fact that, uh, I can only see based on the fact the town is not in the negotiations with the, with the two developers right now. They're not talking to them. Remember when we talked about that road that was gonna come back and go along Mr. George's property, come back in there and they could use that as the two roads?
That's when they come back to us with their site plan. When they come back to us with their site plan, the two developers working together, then the site, then the town gets involved in what they're suggesting.
Okay.
At this point, the two developers, which is really two men and three men, they have to come to what it's going to look like. to come to what it's going to look like.
Okay.
And they have got to share some property.
Okay.
And they've also gonna have to share some property potentially by talking together that'll save them both money for their stormwater and all these other things they've got to do. When they get all that worked out, when those men get that worked out, then they come to the town and they say to us, "This is what we think we want to do. Can the town work with this?" And then, then before you can, anything happens, the town has to approve all those different site plans. So, that's, it's the stages that happen. That's why, working with government, it takes a long time.
So, you're, so, the town is still in this process as far as being one of the secondary roads out of there, out of those developments?
We want, we want a driveway to our property.
Yeah, but later, right?
If you, if you look at our plan that was developed for the golf course, and I don't have one in here, but in that plan, we have a road that runs all the way through it. Right now, we have nothing up there and it could change because of how much it's gonna cost to do it. So, our goal is, when they get their discussions done, that then they bring it to the commissioners, they bring it to the committee, the committee then brings it to the commissioners, the commissioners can vote on it.
But what I'm worried about, I don't, we don't want Crampton open for any reason. And that's our opinion.
Well, when we get to the stage to see what their plans are, we'll know.
That, the fire department access, really, I think that would be problematic for the fire department, just to get up and down those streets. But, yeah, there's, there's some definite concerns here. And I'm all for the 5-0, and I know Mr. Marley's already stated his position, is closing that road down permanently. Wish it'd been a long time ago.
Well, and when we get to that stage, then I'm sure you'll have the board members in unison.
I'm hoping you're doing it tonight.
But, Madam Mayor, I'm gonna call for the vote on Commissioner Legg's motion.
All right, we have a motion to start, have a resolution to start the process to close Crampton. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? So, it's a 3-2 and we'll move forward until such time as we have something from the committee. That concludes public comments, and we do appreciate everyone that came this evening. Next, we have our consent agenda. Is there anything from the consent agenda that you would like moved to new business? Or, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is before? Have a motion to approve, or have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next, under new business, consideration and acceptance of an annexation request for DSI Properties LLC, U.S. Highway 301 South, 3.64 acres. R 2020-29 instructing the clerk to investigate sufficiency of the application. And this is behind tab 16. Is there any questions in reference to this, or any discussion?
Motion to ask the clerk to look in the, to the R 2020-29, to investigate it for sufficiency for-
Have a motion and a second. Do I have any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Consideration of acceptance of the certification of sufficiency and approving resolution R 2020-30, setting a date for a public hearing and instructing the planning director to begin preliminary rezoning for annexation case number 2020-08 for DSI Properties LLC, U.S. Highway 301 South, 3.64 acres.
And I'll make a motion that we, we do the certification on the resolution R 2020-30.
Okay, have a motion that we consider the acceptance of certification of sufficiency and approving resolution R 2020-30.
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed.
Mayor?
Yes.
Left out instructing the planning director to begin rezoning.
And ask for you to have another motion to instruct the planning director to begin preliminary rezoning for annexation case number 8020-08.
Sorry about that. I'll make another motion to ask the planner to start whatever he has to do to rezone, do the necessary work on the R 2020-08, you say?
Yeah, R 2020-30.
-30, I'm sorry.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. The next thing we have is consideration of acceptance of prime movers, member recommendations from the nominating committee. I'll turn it over to the nominating committee at this time.
Madam Mayor, the nominating committee for the Hope Mills Prime Movers would like to accept Elizabeth Armstrong, Monica Carter, April Mata, Jerrel McGeechy, Wanda Pettijohn, Kenneth Rogers, and Nathan Warfield. There were only seven, it was seven opening, seven applications. Only two of those live outside the town limits and they literally live in MIA. They live in Hope Mills area. They're just not, the tent, the city of Hope Mills residents. And that is our recommendation.
And I congratulate you on being able to not only fill your committee, but to just have two that actually are in our MIA. Do we have a second?
Motion to approve the nominating committee's recommendation.
Have a motion, or have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the nominating committee's recommendations for the prime movers. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next, we have consideration of directing staff on expiring concessions contract. Staff would like board direction on renegotiating current contract or sending out requests for approvals, proposals. I'll turn this over to Commissioner Bellflowers, since he requested this, or you, Ms. Adams?
Well, no, this was coming out anyway. I mean, he asked a question about it while I was on vacation, but the plan was to, you know, ask the board for direction. Currently, the leases run out, the 30th of November with both contracts. I was involved previously, with the previous town manager during the last negotiation process, but I'm asking for direction on whether or not the board wishes to put out a request for proposals, or whether they would like for me to begin the process for negotiations with the new contract. They are, they will close November 30th and the, the way it's run before is the current season opens back up March 1st. So, we do have a little bit of time, but it's at the board's pleasure. Currently, I've not had any interest in anyone asking about it, so.
I did, I received a message that I'll read. The Gray and Culver families would like to renegotiate our contract. Big T's is memories for many families in and out of Hope Mills. We've been honored watching two generations come through, including yours. Timmy and I stayed with this location many years without water. We have watched two dams fail, one season lost because of the flesh-eating disease, water lowered in the middle of the season, and this past year COVID. We cannot open ball fields and lost customers because of COVID. It has been better since park areas have opened, but without the ball fields and the closure of parks, it has been another year without full benefits of the park. We love Hope Mills and we would like to continue to be a Hope Mills icon. That was sent to me when they saw that this was gonna be on our agenda this evening.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think we should instruct you to go into negotiations with Mr. T. He's been a blessing in disguise for Hope Mills. Everybody knows who Big T is. So, and good to see him back on his feet and out moving around tonight. So, I'd like to make a motion that we instruct the manager to, to enter into negotiations to do the contract.
Second.
Third.
I have a motion and a second to allow the manager to re-enter renegotiating contracts with the Grays and Culvers. Any discussion or any other questions in reference to this? Any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I like, just about probably everybody here value the years and years and years of operation by Big T's, but I, I look at this, and you alluded to this a little bit ago about business. I look at it as, as a business. And when I look at a business, I look at the fairness of it. And that's why I support the request for proposals. And, and I do that to keep the playing field level. Now, of course, Big T's will be, will be submitting a proposal, just as negotiations. But when we, but when I look at a fairness issue, I say, "We put out an RFP. We do that for every, every other business, do we not? Do we continue that process? I think we do."
Well, I don't believe the last time that this was negotiated, it was not a, a request for proposals. It was negotiated five years ago.
And there may only be one proposal.
Well, I think-
But I look at it as a fairness issue and a business issue, Mayor.
But I personally, you know, I can tell you, when you get good service and you've got loyal, I can, and I'm not gonna pick on our attorney, but we haven't, we have been very satisfied with our attorney and have not asked for our RFPs or anything else because we have good service and he does a good job. So, I think sometimes you have to weigh that and as far as negotiating, the renegotiation, the terms of the contract naturally could change, and that would be left up to our town manager to, to do that as far as what those terms might be. But, that's my thoughts on it.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a comment, too. I'm having a hard time talking because I had, you know, George Reba. I'm gonna say it anyway. Big T is a blessing to the teenagers in this town. They're willing to open up and to hire the teenagers to come and work for them, minimum wage. You can go by there and see them out there. What else is it gonna do? I mean, Big T has been a lifesaver for a lot of these teenagers. And even the seniors like to go out for the little, what is it, slushy cones to wear? But, they're an icon, really, to Hope Mills and what all they've been through. And they were there when the lake was out, they stuck it out with us. And, and I just think that it's only fair to the town, I mean, to let them stay the way it is and not open it up for bids to anybody but them.
Yes, sir.
I say, if we're happy, why change? If the law says we have to put it up for bid, then we have to do it. But if not, my motion would include the manager renewing the contract with Big T.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to allow the manager to renegotiate the contract for Big T's. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Thank you, sir. All right, next thing on our agenda is, this was moved from, we had been asked to be put on the consent agenda, but we moved it to our new business. And this is consideration of approval of the currently budgeted engineering contract with Fleming and Associates, allowing Town Manager Adams to enter a contract in the amount of $24,970 to complete the design phase on the Big T's restaurant, restroom, making it ADA compliant. So, I'll open it up for discussion. I know Commissioner Legg, um-
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I may, I'll address Commissioner Legg's comment about putting it on consent. So, previously, the board has asked for, you know, a little bit more streamlined in an effort to make, not make the meetings shorter, but making the meetings flow a little bit better. I don't have authorization to enter into a contract of this amount, but we are working on financial updates that you all requested. But, this item is currently budgeted for, and so, we routinely put items that have been budgeted for on the consent agenda. We budgeted for this, we knew we were gonna be doing it this year. This is not the construction, this is the design process. The construction will have to come at, go out for bid and come back to you all for approval. So, I just wanted to address that. That's why it was put on consent, because it was my understanding the board, you know, wanted a little bit more streamlined process. It's pretty, it's pretty self-explanatory unless there's other questions.
While, while we're talking about, I just had a question. Are they, are they looking at just the bathroom or the whole building? Like redoing the whole, is that the whole building, just the bathroom? I don't have a problem with it. I'm just curious if they're just re, if they're just doing the, the design on the bathroom or the whole building?
Don, correct me if I'm wrong, but the ADA portion is, the majority of it is the bathroom.
Just the bathroom.
And because we're taking away some storage space in there by not, you know, by the way that this was being done, we're also looking at designing a small storage building.
I mean, is that included, that's why, I guess that's what I was asking. Is that included in that too? The design for the whole-
Yes.
Project?
Yes, sir.
No problem.
And, and one other thing that maybe is relevant is, there were, we did not have plans for that building. There were no sets of plans to have someone look at and say, "Okay, here's what you, you know, here's the best course of action." So, that's why we engaged Fleming and Associates. One, we have a previous relationship with them in which we trust them and they do a very, very good job. And two, we knew we had to get somebody that could do a set of ASBILs. And so, that is, you know, what they have, what they have provided to us.
I guess I was just curious if we were, if we were making, if we were gonna be making-
We're not making the, the structure bigger. No.
Okay.
No. And that's why the, that's why the need for us-
Improving the whole structure, I guess, is what I was thinking, but I, I, I'm just curious, that's all.
Madam Mayor, the reason I asked for this to be switched over is, that seems like a big amount of money to pay for a set of drawings.
And I'll let Don address that.
I know they have to be certified and all that stuff by architect.
Well, we've already purchased a set of drawings. We have the ASBILs for the building. That's what the, the building assessment was for, that we had originally done. All that money is for, we've got a, got to include a mechanical and electrical engineer needs to be included in the drawings for that because everything's going to have to move for it. Part of their drawings is going to be actually demolition of some of the flooring systems because we don't know what the plumbing and the electrical systems are underneath the slab. We do know that they go under the slab, but other than that, we have no idea. So, they are going to have to spend a couple of trips, do some selective demolition, and then do their design work. The mechanical and electrical engineer's gonna cost us almost $10,000. And that's, I mean, that, that's the price of doing business with that type of an engineer. The remainder of the funding is for Fleming, and he does the structural portion. And then he'll also do the contract administration for us, just like they did for the pier and for the bulkhead, where they will administer the product, the project as far as the contract goes, and then they will also provide some oversight for it as well when it comes to milestone rigors of it. To answer your question, Mr. Marley, we're not changing the footprint of the building itself, but we do have to tear walls out on both bathrooms in order to make them larger. And when you do that, you change all of your plumbing and electrical. So, that's gonna be involved, and then the additional building, because we're taking out about 200 square feet of storage. So, that's where we're looking at, at building this, this, a small storage building out back, so that way, the concessions doesn't lose any stores. Because if you were to actually look in those back rooms, they're pretty, pretty packed full of stuff, so they can't lose any space.
I guess it just where it just said, the bathrooms and everything. I was just curious where we're gonna hit the whole building or where we're going.
Right. And one of the reasons that we're looking at doing it the way we are is actually a cost-saving measure. We could probably add to that building, but if you, we did that, we'd be changing the roofline, and if we did that, we'd be changing the structure, and that would be very expensive. So, if we just knock out some, I say just knock out, but if we knock out some interior walls and do some selective demo in the flooring and replace it, it's a lot less expensive to build a new building from the ground up than it is to add on to an existing building and then change the entire structural integrity of it.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor? No. You in front of me?
Town manager, may I ask Donna a question? It's not pertaining to the plumbing and all, but it is Big T's. I've had several people call and ask about parking at Big T's. They do have designated parking just for Big T's, right?
The, the parking lot, as far as I know, the parking lot that's there is for Big T's and the parking- The, the parking lot, as far as I know, the parking lot that's there is for Big T's and the parking lot.
But if it's a business and a town business, aren't they a lot of something?
I can't answer that that parking, it's a lake park, the way it's asked. And I don't mean any disrespect. It's, I'm not quite sure how to answer that.
Well, they say that they go there, but they, they can't get to Big T's on account of the kayak people and lake people. And they just wanna know how else they could go without parking over and, there are seniors.
Hopefully, when we do the Fountain Lane portion, that'll alleviate some of that issue. But it is a, it is a town parking lot for the lake park. And part of that is-
And, yeah, the concession is the town's.
But a large part of it is the park itself also, so.
Okay.
But I'm hoping that with the Fountain Lane piece, when we do that parking lot, that'll alleviate some of the issues maybe.
Are there any handicap parking spaces there? Like maybe two?
At Big T's, there are, there are handicap parking spots and that does meet the code requirements.
I think it's the first two, when you, when you first come in the entrance, it's the first two on the right.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, the, the reason I asked for this to be moved over so we could have it explained and understand. I know that we did the budget back in, what, January, March, the workshop? And I know a bunch of this stuff was included, but I'm wondering what the price of the construction's gonna be? If this is $25,000, just to say, this is what I want you to do. And do we need them to come in here and inspect their own self in that? Do we have an inspector?
Well, our inspectors, our inspectors will inspect for code compliance and will oversee it. The qualifier to that is that when you're doing something like this and you have a structural engineer, they have a certain amount of liability for anything that they design. And they're going to come in at a milestone part of it, whether it be if they put any steel in for purlins or something like that, they haven't designed it yet. They're going to wanna come in and make sure that what they're being held accountable for and what they're being held responsible for is actually being done the way it's supposed to be done.
Yeah, but that's several hundred dollars every time they make a trip.
It, it's included in their cost.
Uh, I, I read all that today that Ms. Starling sent out to us. And I was amazed as I went through there and saw some of the stuff that they get paid for, you know? I used to get paid just because I was the contractor. I had to be there. But in any event, and I'm not trying to slow this down, I'll support it. But I'd like to try to make sure that we do the work during the winter months when they're closed, if that's at all possible.
Well, that's why we're doing this like we are, so that way when we get to the actual construction portion, it'll be during the off-season.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are you, are you finished?
I was gonna make a motion to approve it.
Oh, okay. I still have a comment, so it doesn't matter.
Okay, have a motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
Have a motion to approve in a second. Do you have a comment now, Commissioner Bellflowers?
Oh, yeah. Hey, uh, like Commissioner Marley, I had a couple of questions too. And that's why I called Melissa today and asked her, cause I wasn't really sure if we were adding this 200 square foot, uh, storage to the building or if it was gonna be a separate building. Uh, so she clarified that. And I'm, this renovation is long overdue for this building, without any question, given the amount of people that are, that are now coming to that building on day in and day out. It's long overdue, but I, my, my other question is, we budgeted $75,000 for this project. This is 25,000 of that 75, which leaves 50,000. Is that gonna do it?
Can't tell you. Probably not. We might have to look and see if we can't come up with some funding someplace else. We might have to shift money between other things. Keep in mind that Big T's, the concession was identified in our ADA plan.
Right.
And it was identified as our number one priority because of the amount of public traffic in that area. And another one of the reasons that we, we asked the, the Fleming folks to come and do this is that, I mean, we've worked with them, but they have also done a number of projects that are governed by the Architectural Barriers Act. So they're very familiar with it. They know what they need to do. We have a couple other ADA projects that are on the books. And it, it may very well be that something has to be pushed off until next year if the, the price comes in, in excess of. When we do the budget, we take a wag at something. And when we're doing that, we're looking at what the current price is with a reasonable increase for any type of escalations from material and labor. With COVID, material and labor, as, you know, if you've tried to go buy a two by four, you know that the price of a two by four has gone up, you know, probably almost doubled in the last six months. You know, so materials are going to go up. The chances are labors are gonna go up significantly as well. And that unfortunately is just the market that we're in right now. You know, but we still have a statutory requirement to make the town ADA compliant. And that's, you know, our goal is, is to keep carrying on and make progress. So that way, when the state comes to audit the town, they can see that we are in good faith. You know, we've developed the plan and we're going to do what we need to do to accomplish it.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, Mayor.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Give me explanation. Uh, next we have our manager's report. Do you have anything to add?
I do.
Okay.
I sure do. And I would like to ask, um, our Parks and Recreation Director, Lamarcus Morrison, to come up. We have, um, an announcement, a very exciting announcement for you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. I'm gonna take this off briefly.
That's okay.
So it's good to be able to bring you all good news before change.
Thank you.
I know my last couple of times up here has been to discuss events and, and programs that we weren't sure we were gonna be able to have, but this is actually good news. If you all will recall, on September 18th, um, it was in the manager's report that we were gonna, um, I was gonna have a virtual meeting with the Partef Authority to find out the, um, the awards for the Partef grant. And so, um, there were quite a few. I, I wanna say there was over 50, almost 60 applicants and 21 million in requests. And so, um, with, with $5 million to give out and then another $2 million came from a private donor. So $7 million to divvy out to communities. So, um, I'm happy to say that Hope Mills was one of 16, um, communities that was actually granted the, um, a Partef granting amount of $300,000.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah.
How much was that?
$300,000.
$300,000.
All right.
I just wanna be sure I heard you right.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir. So, um-
Yeah, COVID year.
And, and I, I just wanna just, um, reiterate that, you know, all those meetings we'd had with the, um, the, um, Youth Coalition, um, Park and Recreation Board, parents, um, veterans, the, um, gosh, um, the Better Business Bureau, all of those helped. Because one of the things they do look at is support from the community. So don't think that for one minute that didn't have a big impact. They did look at all those letters and all the support, um, of what this project could do for the community. So, um, with that, it's a kinda like a two-ply process. We still have to keep with our obligation, which is, um, uh, $329,000 as a match. So, um, and there's a couple of ways we can go about making sure that we, um, commit to that. So in the next month or so, I will be coming back to you all with the contract and to request that you all, um, accept the grant. And so accepting the grant is the next, um, the next, um, step. I'd like to say that there was three, three communities that, um, gave the money back. And that, that's never a good look for communities. And so when they ask for money again this year, I noticed they didn't get awarded any money. And it was brought up the fact that they gave money back in the past. So, um, just wanna be cautious. That's one of the things that we don't wanna do. So, um, so in the next month or so, we'll get our official letter and then, um, the contract. And I'll bring that back to you all for consideration.
Then we started to have a groundbreaking and work on Heritage Park finally.
Absolutely.
I'll be, I said that, I remember when we put the sign in the ground down there. And I said, it seems like such a long time ago, but this is exciting. Thank you so much.
Ah, you're welcome. You're welcome.
And the cat almost got out of the bag.
The gum, he did.
Senator W. Air posted on his Facebook page today and I was like, oh, no. I wanted it to be a surprise.
Well, he sent, he sent both of us an email with all the information. And then that's why I forwarded it and then I was told, keep it a secret. But I thought, you know, he, he was so excited that we got it, that he wanted us to know. So, but thank you so much for all your hard work. And, and this is, this is exciting that we can finally see, um, and we're gonna push you to get it happening real fast now.
Oh, I'm used to it.
I know, it's so long, it's been so long coming, so.
And it's bittersweet. Um, Greenville, the community I came from, they applied this year. And I was kinda, I was so happy they didn't get it and we got it. But, but they, they've had three in the past, so, um, we do get experience with the ministry.
It's our turn. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lamarcus. Thank you for all your hard work.
You're welcome.
On the application process.
Okay.
I have, um, just two other quick items. One is, um, in my manager's report, I think I, um, put some information in there about the, um, patching and crack field and that there were, you know, health works had come up in the streets and come up with the list. I've given you all a list of that and that will be included in my manager's report, um, tomorrow when it's posted. And then the last item is, um, and Mayor Warner, you had asked about this because you had had some concerns, but, um, Coach Autry, um, has indicated that he wants to do two more 3K runs at the golf course, just like the one that he did on September 7th. Those dates are September 24th and October 24th. They'll be holding practices. Uh, Parks and Rec Director Morrison has reached out to him and indicated that we do not want him driving around the property and that they do need to make sure that you're mindful of the social distancing and the masks when they're not practicing. So just wanna let you all know about that. And that's it.
Madam Mayor, I just got one, one comment from Melissa. In your manager's report, you had an update on Fountain, on that Fountain Lane property? About to demolish and clean the property? I'd just like to know what the process is on doing this and who's, who's paying for this?
We're gonna let, um, the attorney speak to the process and-
So there, there is a statutory process for demolition of buildings. It's gotta be declared on the same building inspector, which I believe has already been done. So we, the next step will be provide notice of a hearing to property owner to come in and say that we're going to order the building to be demolished. And they come in and have a chance to, uh, explain to the board or reflect to the board not demolish the property or whatnot. Uh, and then, once that hearing has been completed, then we can move ahead with demolition of property and, and seek the cost of property.
So that hearing-
With Dan on the, on the, um, recouping the funds.
So that hearing will be part of the agenda?
It will need to be, yeah. It doesn't necessarily need to be a public hearing, but it would most likely be just included as part of, you know, maybe we could do it as a, um, special meeting, maybe 30 minutes or so before regular speaking.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we've carried this out one other time, uh, and that, what happened in that case is the, the owner of the property agreed, the lien was put on the property to cover the, cause the property had been up, was up for sale. So the town, before the property can be sold, the town would recoup what they paid to have it, the building torn down. And I think that worked really well because the owner was okay with it too at that time. I don't, but that, that process has worked.
Well, yeah, and that's, that's why I was asking is cause, you know, the taxpayer's gonna be paying to, to demolish and clean this, this area up. I just wanted to make sure that we had a clear understanding of the process.
There, there are procedures in place where we can get that cost covered, but we're sort of limited in.
Okay.
It's not as easy as you tell them to run your check.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. To, for the other building, I think the other time, it was about 12,000 for that, um, demolition of that home. So I don't know, it's, yeah, so that, I know we had, we got bids then on tearing it down. I don't know what in this, it's been-
On board's trees or what?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dan.
All righty then. All right, next we have, um, of course, our reminders. And the, we are going to be going to FT, to, um, Spring Lake to look at the FTC training center, uh, at the fire department. Now, my question is, are we planning on just all meeting there? Are we gonna try to arrange some type of carpooling or have you thought through that or has anybody got any?
Um, well, there's a group of us, um, gonna leave me from here, but, um, I think Jane, you're going, correct?
Yes.
And, um, Drew, are you going? Myself and Tiffany and Chancer. So it's up to you all if you wanna meet us here and then, or if you wanna meet there. It's up to you all. But I know that the ones that are leaving from here, we're not all driving separately.
Okay.
What time are you leaving here?
Um, I believe it's about, you sent the, didn't you forward that information to the board? About eight, we were gonna leave about 8:30?
I didn't.
Or?
I didn't set a leaving time. I didn't have that just-
I read it today. I didn't see a time to leave.
About, about 20 after 8:30. Yeah. It takes about 20 minutes together from what Bobby said.
Okay. Well, if any of the board members, if you want to, uh, for us to get together, if it's convenient. If not, then we'll just, uh, we can arrange it, but.
I would, I'm, I'm gonna be headed back to campus probably the same as Commissioner Bellflowers, but I would recommend maybe a central meeting place when we get there on that campus before we go into the building.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know-
I think that's, that, that email from Bobby Carter, I think that was sent to you all, but forwarded to you all, but I'll double check.
Yeah.
Did it, did it say where we were supposed to be?
I think it-
I think it did, but I'll-
I think it was. It's in the front piece before we go in the building.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I'll be on, you'll probably be on campus too.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just gonna meet everybody there.
Okay. I'll meet you all in the front.
I'll double check and make sure that information is sent.
Okay. Okay. All right. Sounds good. All right, the, um, other meetings that are coming up, our next board meeting naturally is October the 5th. We have, um, staff comments. Ms. Starling, do you have any comment?
Yeah, the camera worked.
All right.
That's a good comment.
That's nice that you finally decided to wake up and work with us.
Yeah.
Any other comments, ma'am? No, thank you for all you do. Uh, Mr. Hertzog? Okay, Ms. Adams?
No, ma'am.
All righty. I'll start up here. How about official comments? Do you have anything, Commissioner Bellflowers?
Hey, I got one question. Who cleaned up Camden Road between McDonald's and Walgreens? Who cleaned up that intersection? Somebody did, somebody did it this week in a truck.
Have no idea.
Don, who did it?
The street department was out.
You guys did it. Because it was a Hope Mills truck that was parked on top of the median. And it was a Hope Mills worker and there was a wheelbarrow out there. And the reason I know this is because my daughter told me she went by there and she saw. And I said, man, this is really great. Thanks, Don. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Edwards?
I'd like to, uh, again, thank Drew and his crew for, um, getting the financial achievement award. And Lamarcus already left, but I wanted to thank him also for his hard work in getting the Part of Fair.
Mayor Proctin?
I have a couple of things, but I'll be brief. Can you hear me okay, Jane? Okay, um, on last year, we did, we celebrated World Homeless Day here in the town of Hope Mills. This year, again, on October the 9th, Alms House is working with the FTC Culinary Department. And they are going, we're gonna do it in conjunction with World Hunger Day, which is the next week and World Homeless Day. I don't really wanna use the word World Homeless Day, cause I don't want people to feel like they can't come by and get a meal, unless they're homeless, but it will be soup, um, like it was the last time. And their, their soup is amazing and it will be prepackaged and be draw through. And that will be in the YMCA parking lot, so the traffic can flow a little bit better. And I have asked Mr. Grilli to reach out to Chief Ochardo for, um, traffic. A flyer is being created and will be distributed. And that is supposed to be on Octo, Friday, October the 9th. I think it's from 11 to 1. And I would also like to remind people, to remind other people that the last day to register to vote is October the 9th. Also the, with the Federal Arts Council, Federal Cumberland Arts Council, we will have a virtual IFF on Saturday of 1- Also, the, with the Federal Arts Council, Federal Cumberland Arts Council, we will have a virtual IFF on Saturday at 1:00 PM. You know, that's a really big festival that we're usually able to celebrate in the community. We aren't able to do that this year. So I invite you all to explore or attend the virtual IFF on Saturday at 1:00 PM. I did attend a plan review meeting on Thursday. It was very informative. I was able to learn a lot. So I thank you all for the invitation for that. And again, I would also like to thank Drew and Lamarcus and their, and their teams for their hard work. And also, I'm excited about this possibility of the domestic violence violence station, and if you all need anything from me, please let me know. I had also talked with Mr. Greeley about maybe getting the veterans involved, especially since we kind of knew it was a, of, the military population was highly affected by this. And also like to thank Pastor Mathis and Mission Field Ministries for their food giveaway that they do. I think it may be on the first or third of Saturday. I have to confirm the date with him. And I would also like to thank our volunteers on our committees and let them know that we thoroughly appreciate everything that they do. And I am excited to see this, um, this crack seal schedule as well. We hear a lot of people complaining about the streets and people that want to know what's going on with Heritage Park, so now we have some great news. That's all, Madam Mayor.
All right. Um, Commissioner Marley?
Just a, just a point of clarification on my part from earlier tonight. Drew, I appreciate everything you do and your staff does. I know that I was the, I guess, Scrooge or whatever, but I feel like all our employees in this town do a good job. And I just, I just didn't feel right if I couldn't give it to everybody. So I do appreciate you. I appreciate your staff do a bang-up job. You're probably one of the best finance directors this town has ever seen. And I've been connected with this town a long time. And, uh, but I will, I will say that, and I appreciate it.
Okay. Commissioner Wang?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank everyone who came out tonight. It was good to see people back in the room again.
Oh, yeah.
Of course, we know we're scaled down a little bit, but hopefully this illness will get away from us and get out of here. Drew, congratulations on your hard work, you and your staff. We appreciate it. And like Mayor Protem said, uh, Lamarcus didn't pull it out. But congratulations to him and, and the hard work that he's done to, to get this grant together to, is it a grant?
Partifair. Partifair.
To get started on the park. We've been, I'm not the mayor, it's been a long time.
Long time.
Since we planted that sign over there. It quit growing. Uh, I, I would like to say it's good to see Timmy Gray out this evening. Again, Timmy, a lot of prayers with your way. Goodness to you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. I have something that I, that I was a part of, um, on Saturday evening that I think was exciting for Hope Mills. Most of you know that, um, we have lots of veterans and lots of veterans organizations, and they work. They've been working, um, on their own, what, so to speak. Saturday night was an opportunity for them all to come together. We had post 10-630, we had post 760, we had the Women's Auxiliaries from both of those. We also had the VFW and Women's Auxiliary from that. They had a meal together, and they talked about how they want to work together as common unified group. They'll still do their individual things, but they're going to come together, and just like Saturday night, they're planning on making that, um, a, a regular, maybe once a month, getting them all together. And they asked if there was something that they could do for the town, that they wanted to be able to help. And, and, you know, I see all sorts of possibilities because, uh, you've got, many of them, uh, have lived here a long time, many of them retired here. But it was, the food was good, the, the socialization was great, and it made you feel good because you had, you had groups of people together that for the most part have not had that unity. So I just want to congratulate them. The other thing that I want to remind people, because I think this is so often with the situation we're in now. I worked very closely with this gentleman, mainly because at the time I was at Southview, involved in athletics, but also because of my son. But Gary Ford, for those of you that, uh, that know Gary Ford or knew Gary Ford, he passed away. Uh, and the concern that I have is that there's probably so many youth in our town that were affected by him. He coached, uh, hand-in-hand with Bobby Posse, who was the state championship coach at, um, Southview. He did a youth, uh, he and Bobby Posse did a 13, 12 and under, I think, uh, youth, uh, football team that won the county championship. But he always, for the whole 40 years I've been in Hope Mills, he has been involved in, in sports. So he, I think his, um, it'll be a, a family-type, uh, memorial service, but I just wanted to, to let the town know that, um, we've lost another icon and somebody that was really very important to youth and athletics in, in Hope Mills. And that's all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Good night.